Good evening, welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, June 6, 2022. We'll call to order at 6:34 PM. I'm gonna bounce around a little bit tonight to work through stuff we have people here for. First item I'd like to go to is discussion regarding hiring of patrol officers. Our Section 17, Chief Holst, if you would join us.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. So we have a memo here from you regarding an applicant for our open positions.
Correct, sir, yes.
Currently, who is interested in a full-time patrol officer position and is available and more than fully trained.
Thirty-one years on the job, I'd say, a lot of experience.
And just for background, we had a rolling open application process and I've only had a few non, or no experience or not trained applicants other than this person so far, since the last screening.
That's correct, sir, we've had four or five applications that have come in early in the, early in the post-in, all, you know, good candidates, but they, they lack the part-time academy, full-time academy, part-time academy, then that bridge academy, so.
And so just to summarize, you've had discussion, you would recommend an appointment, and we did not go through screening because it's a pool of one, so at this point, the screening committee did not review the candidate.
That's correct, sir.
So, that's just a quick summary of your memo. Gentlemen, I've obviously spoke with Chief about this a little bit already, so I'm kind of open to you for questions, comments.
My question is, my first question is, is how short are we?
So we're currently three full-time officers with a fourth that is just about finished up with field training, so we have four on staff, one should be wrapping up here soon, be ready to go on his own, and then we currently have on the books just one part-time officer.
And that four includes yourself?
That four includes myself, yes.
Of our standard six, correct?
Correct.
So the addition of this officer will do what for the department?
It will alleviate a tremendous amount of staffing issues as far as shift coverage goes, we will be able to hire this candidate with very minimal amount of training, thirty, like I said, thirty-one years on the job, she knows how to be a police officer, she's committed her career to community policing, she fits what I value in policing, and I think that with, you know, Irving, and this is the town, this is our layout, this is the layout of our department, this is how we process stuff, she will be able to pick up very quickly and, and fill in, I would hope, immediately, within a few weeks, my idea is to have her ready to go by mid-July. And she will begin working shifts and relieving a lot of overtime and doubles that the staff are having to, to deal with now.
Okay, so my, my, my third question would be, we were three, my understanding is, is the issue with the starting pay?
I'm sorry.
Is there an issue with the starting pay?
I, I believe that we should negotiate it at some point, contingent on her hiring, if you guys do approve.
I think my thought would be if, if the board is interested in making an appointment without, you know, and instead of doing our interview process, you know, I think what may make the most sense is to do it contingent upon our normal, you know, pre-employment screening, et cetera, and successful negotiation of compensation, because I think that needs, probably needs some additional discussion, you know, level of experience and everything versus kind of where we've been hiring in the past at a, not even necessarily fully-trained stat, status, so, and that would give, if that's the direction the board wanted to go, that'd give a couple of weeks to our next meeting to begin the screening as well as sort that out and then come back to the board with a recommended issue on, you know, a pay rate at that point.
And, and just to Chairman Smith's point, is that, you know, we're still looking at the psychological, a physical, which will take, you know, a couple of weeks, and if we can start that process, the background check that I have to do now, Post has created a new process for, for vetting out backgrounds, so if I can begin that process, it would streamline, and all that could be wrapped up by the time that you guys are probably ready to make a decision, or close to, so I would be looking at a start date, hopefully July 1, to begin training, and have all that other stuff out of the way.
Well, I have no concerns, so, for me, I can't speak for the board, but for me, you know, I, I think it's important enough to, to have as many offices as we, as we can to, to supplement what we, what, what we currently have, so I, I am in favor of bringing this hire on, so.
Appreciate that, sir, thank you.
I guess, just for the record, it's not anything that we can't say or won't say, it's, the candidate is Laura Gordon.
That's correct, sir.
Was, or is, I'm not sure the right word.
Is still, currently still is employed.
Thank you, is a, currently a Greenfield officer.
Correct, I was very excited to hear that she was interested, I mean, she comes with a, this is her application, so, so, she's gonna be a huge asset.
I have absolutely no concerns with appointing Laura Gordon to the position, again, the only concern I would have is successful negotiation of a starting salary, you know, we, very rare does Irving have a candidate that wants to come here with thirty-one years of experience, so.
Agreed.
This would be something new that we would be looking at, how to fit that in and stay, stay fair to our current staff while also honoring three decades worth of, you know, high caliber policing, so.
Absolutely, and I, and I would think that my staff would be excited to have, have her on and, and have the relief as well, so.
So I, I have one more question, is there any?
You said three, Bill.
Any other opportunities from Greenfield? I mean, can we, can we?
I'm hoping.
Does it we have a conversation with some of those folks, or?
I have a few things, I have a few things going, so, nothing that I feel comfortable reporting to you guys on, because it's, it's not, but I, I am looking at some options.
A few irons in the fire, so to speak?
Yep.
This is just a kind of a general question, because obviously it's all over the news and it's not, it's a tough situation for Greenfield.
Yes.
I expect if, due to those unfortunate circumstances, there are available candidates, that's not until July 1, based on the funding change, so that's, generally, right, I mean, in a budget sense, like, they're funded probably till the end of June, so, maybe there's, just kind of throwing it out there, maybe there's conversations, but they're probably not going to be at that level until July, or closer to, I would expect, so.
I would respect, I want to be respectful of them and their situation.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
But it doesn't hurt to ask.
Right.
I think, I'm sure communities who are looking for people are all watching that closely, just because, I mean, the pool is very small, so.
And I, I don't want to be callous, but, you know, I, I feel like we, if we have an opportunity to support another community and support its officers, I'd like to think we can do that in a way that, that helps them and helps us as well.
Absolutely, absolutely, sir, no question.
Not necessarily the, the group that we may talk about in the future, but I know we've had a, a fair share of officers we've trained along the way who've then made their way to Greenfield too, so, it's a different direction in an unfortunate way, but it is, if we can help, and it helps us too, right? Okay, so I don't have any concerns either, just to, you know, for the record, I'm in support of it and I think it's an amazing opportunity.
Yep, I agree, I agree.
So, I, my computer's just coming online here, would one of you be willing to make a motion on that?
Sure.
Do you need contingent language, or do you?
No, I think I should, I should be able to get it all in there, so I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Laura Gordon to the Irving Police Department, pending completion of all pre-employment screening, including Corey, post-C, health exams, drug screens, psychological exams, background checks, and negotiation of an acceptable starting salary, I think that hits it all.
So we say salary and benefits, just to be, or do we need it, or?
So amendment would include benefits with the salary?
Second.
Thank you, Bill.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did we put a date?
I did not.
We'll have this to you for your next meeting.
I was gonna say, because it's.
For the recommendation, but this allows us to start the background check process?
Yep.
So you're getting out, we can leave it open for now and set a date when we set the pay and sort that out next meeting?
The recommendation wouldn't be until after the start of the fiscal year anyways, so.
Correct.
We'll have another meeting before then.
Yep, okay, makes sense.
Excellent, thank you, gentlemen, do I have anything else tonight that you, you do?
We, we have the draft agreement for the co-responder clinician services, with CSO and the intermunicipal agreement, I guess what I would say, just two things, one, for the board, was there anything, did you, did you have a variety of questions or things you wanted to review in it, or not, and I only ask because we have the ADA Evaluation and Transition Plan, we were supposed to start a minute or two ago, so if, if we want to have some conversation about it, I would put it to after, if we don't, then we can just.
Brian made all the changes that we had discussed, putting everything into one instead of having all the separate contracts, I reviewed it, I don't have any other questions, I would be ready to sign off on it.
Excellent.
I have no concern.
Excellent, she's been working out great, too, I mean, she's been with us.
Yeah, I've seen articles already, people are very happy.
And she's been very busy, and the, the program is diverting people from having to go to the hospital or jails already, she's had several successful.
Fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, she's been amazing, so.
So, if the three of you are ready, the two questions are, we should probably start with the funding one?
Yeah.
DMH has sent over to the chief and the contract was in there that they're willing to start effective June 1, so be backdating to last week, to get the first allotment of these funds, and then I think there'll be a contract amendment coming for the next fiscal year, they did it in two pieces, so if he would be willing to vote to adopt that and authorize the chair and the chief to sign off on that, that'd be great, and then the second one would be a vote to authorize the agreement with CSO, so that we can get that done, and the signatory should be the chair and the chief.
Just out of curiosity, on the statement of work, there was two copies in the, in our packet.
I don't know why, I apologize for that, I know it's afterwards.
I was just reading, making sure that, I kept reading back and forth, making sure there weren't two different, or any changes between them, so it's just a duplicate?
I apologize, yes.
All right, that's fine, it just had me wondering, um, all right.
Thank you.
So you only want the current one month for now, and then we'll bring back to you a contract amendment when they're ready? Sixteen-five, right?
Yes.
If you're good, I'll?
Yeah, if you would.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mine's being slow here.
Through, just want to make sure I have the same, the right stuff here, although it's through DMH, it's actually a contract with CSO, correct?
The first vote is with DMH.
Okay, that's.
Yep.
For the funding?
Correct.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve a contract between Department of Mental Health and the Town of Irving for contracted work through the jail arrest diversion program in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred, with a start date of June 1, 2022, through June 30, 2022.
Second.
You need anything else, Brian? Oh, actually.
He does, yeah.
Yes, and I knew I was missing something, so I'm gonna, if you're willing to pull back your second, I will also add that the chair, Jacob Smith, and chief Holst will be signatories on that contract.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
I knew I was missing something.
And I'll get it back to you tomorrow, chief?
Yes, sir.
Do you want me to take a stab at the second one?
Yeah, so before I go ahead and take a stab at the second one.
Yeah, you or I, whichever.
There's, there's a lot more signatories on this one, correct, because it's gonna be signed by all.
Correct, so you all have a lead entity on this one, the funding is flowing through the Town of Irving, so the contract is happening between the Town of Irving and CSO, but because the other communities all have a, a programmatic involvement, and therefore have like a liability concern, so they need to be covered by insurance, they're signing on to show their commitment to those pieces and to make sure CSO acknowledges them as participants in the program, but they are not, from a fiduciary standpoint, they are not involved in this transaction.
But as far as the motion with agreements between the towns of?
I would say for right now, it's just.
It's just Irving as the, as the lead, so we're, the rest is just clerical?
They're signing on to it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I, it is all towns with CSO.
Right.
But it's us with CSO as the lead town, and then each town would be approving the same agreement with CSO, because basically, we're all listed, but each town separately is, is the agreement is between us.
I just want to make sure the motion doesn't have to include them as signatories.
I mean, if you want to acknowledge that it's a regional pilot with those towns, I don't think it would hurt, I know that the chairman and myself had had a conversation in the future, if, if this program becomes wildly successful and another town wants to sign on and there's a process for onboarding another community, the composition could evolve, similarly, a community could say, we've done it for the pilot year, we're not looking to continue until the second year, so they may choose to withdraw, so, so I think we acknowledge that, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure that the vote to engage these services of the Town of Irving and CSO, that's the relationship, but if you wanted to have it in, I think.
No, that, that's fine, the agreement lays it out, I just want to make sure that the motion doesn't contradict it at all, that's all.
So the only thing I think I left blank in there was a term date, so we want to start with June 1.
Because of that other one, yep.
And if you're okay with it, I would say let's do it through June 30 of 2023, because we anticipate the full contract is coming for the full year.
Right, so the only one we have amendment for is the funding through DMH.
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have questions on that?
Not that, that, that makes sense to me, I guess I'm going back to the whole agreement, the agreement is between the towns.
Right.
And CSO.
Because even, even the first one, it says this agreement enters into buy-in-between, and it lists every single one of them in there, so.
I guess that's my thing, the agreement, I mean, the header is this agreement between all the towns and CSO, because the agreement is with us, but as lead town, we are the lead town, it is called out in multiple places, but we are not entering into an agreement with the other towns solely, like, we're not providing, sort of, like, we're not entering into an agreement as Irving with just CSO, and then entering, Irving entering into an agreement with the other towns.
They're all entering into.
They're entering into the same agreement with us and with CSO.
Correct.
Because we're furnishing lead services to those towns and support.
Okay.
And so is CSO providing support to all of the towns, so, to me, it's an agreement with, from CSO to each town, and from Irving to each town.
Okay.
Right, and CSO, that, that's the way I read that, and this was the piece, I think, the other day, I was trying to wrap my head around, are we, are we the entity that's engaged with DMH and CSO, and then all the other towns are engaging in an agreement with Irving to benefit a piece of the service we have, or is, are those towns also getting direct services through CSO and DMH, and they're not, it's the ish part that's confusing me?
It's because we're trying to blend two things together.
Right.
And part of that's coming from the potential, I'm hoping we don't need to use this, but the potential liability, that each town is going to want to have coverage if something were clinically to not go well, and so each town's gonna want that in there, similarly, the chief needs some basic understandings from each of the communities about what their responsibility is to participate in the program, so we were trying to put all of that into one comprehensive document, and that's where you get that muddying of the relationship, it's meant to be comprehensive, so if it, if you think it's more accurate to have your motion include the member towns, then maybe that makes sense.
Yeah, well, and the reason I asked is even, even in your draft, Section 28 is the signatory approval, and it lists every chief and every chairman of, of every committee, I mean, they're in, they're listed in the agreement as signatory approvals, so to not have them in the motion seems, they all have to sign off on it before we go into it.
It's interconnected, it's not one or the other, right?
Right.
We're not relaying services to towns who want to sign on, they are directly engaged, and I know the liability pieces and everything's a big part of that, but, which brings me to the question that I asked chief earlier, because I'm gonna bring that back up, because now I'm, I'm wondering, so the DMH funding is for seven towns, the agreement is for six, because Leverett provides policing services for Wendell?
Correct.
However, the town liability is still Wendell's, the town should still be signing on, even if it's the same chief of police, should they not? It is the seventh town, we listed towns.
But that depends on.
Between their agreement.
Their agreement.
And my understanding, and I don't want to speak for Chief Minkler or the Select Board of Leverett or Wendell, but my understanding is, is that Leverett is Leverett Police Department doing business in Wendell.
That's my understanding.
I could be wrong, and so.
I see what you're saying, so you're saying Leverett's.
They're contracted to, to perform police work for the Town of Wendell.
Correct, and so if Leverett decides.
They're not a joint, they're not a joint or regional police force.
No, but all the liability falls to Leverett, that, I guess that's the question, that's the basis of my question, is the, a demonification and liability all falls to Leverett, even if they're performing policing services in the Town of Wendell?
I believe so.
I don't know the answer to that one.
Okay.
I do know that it is Leverett Police Department.
I guess, because we're gonna come back to all this, if, if you're all amenable, I would say, why don't we do June 3? amenable, I would say, why don't we do June 30, 2022? We can always take a few minutes to sort out a few of these questions, and if we need to amend it for the following fiscal year, we can do it then, because that'll give us, we can just get started. And I'm not worried about a 30-day adjustment, but.
It limits our issues if we do have any.
If we do need to fix it or.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay.
All right. That was a lot of discussion before we even have a motion. I make a motion that we approve the agreement between the towns of Irving, Bernison, Gill, Leverett, Northfield, Warwick, and Clinical Support Options Incorporated for the Arrest and Jail Diversion Program effective June 1, 2022 through June 30, 2022. Authorizing chief of police and the chairman of all respective towns as signatories on the contract.
Second.
It just doesn't feel right.
I think you just need to authorize chief Holst and chairman Smith.
Well, the only problem is they're not the only ones listed as signatories.
But if they don't sign on, that's their choice. We can't, we can't authorize that.
Maybe, maybe the, if you wanted to make an amendment, would be for the Town of Irving.
For the Town of Irving.
We're not specifying other signatories. We're just specifying the one for Irving.
Okay. So I'm going to amend that. I'm going to amend that. Because that was my, that's what I was grappling with is, is the whole signatory piece. So motion stands as a contract between towns of Irving, Bernison, Gill, Leverett, Northfield, Warwick, and CSO Clinical Support Options June 1, 2022, June 30, 2022. And authorize chief Holst and chairman Smith as signatories for the Town of Irving.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a mouthful.
Lot of discussion for a 24-day contract.
But it won't be a long discussion in July 1.
No.
No, it won't be before July 1.
I'll take it to you tomorrow.
I believe that is all we have for you tonight, chief. Anything else for us?
Nope. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, chief, for all your work on that.
Yep.
That's exciting.
It is.
And now, without further ado.
Yes.
The ADA evaluation and transition plan draft.
Sorry for the delay. I had a bunch of questions.
Not a problem. I'm glad I'm not having to make those motions.
I appreciate your patience. Thank you for joining us.
Sure. So I am here to present a summary of the draft ADA self-evaluation and transition plan that the Franklin Regional Council of Governments performed this spring. I'm Megan Rose, the transportation planner at the CERCOG. And so we were contracted to prepare this self-evaluation and transition plan. I think it was February, and so we've conducted that through the spring, from February to April. And what this is, is it is making sure that the town is complying with the American with Disabilities Act. And to do that, you first have to do an evaluation to evaluate, make sure that the town's programs, services, and activities and buildings and facilities are in compliance with the ADA. So once that is evaluated, we then have to prepare a transition plan for any of those issues that are found that aren't in compliance. We then create a recommendations, some actions, and how to bring those up to code. And so that's all kind of bundled in this one plan that we've prepared for the town. And it evaluates the programs and services of the town and also the buildings and physical facilities of the town. So what we did was to evaluate the programs and services of the town, we distributed checklists to all department heads in town, evaluating them on their, their knowledge of, in terms of how to comply with the American Disabilities Act related to how do you effectively communicate with people with disabilities? You know, whether they need to provide auxiliary aids such as braille or listening devices, do your staff know how to do that? Things like that. And then also, what do they do? Does the town know how to provide reasonable modifications in case someone needs something to be modified in order to make sure that they can participate fully in town activities? And so the results of those checklists came in, and we found that town staff are pretty knowledgeable in terms of what their duties are for the ADA. Like most towns, especially here in Western Mass, that have small staff and, and have somewhat limited interactions with the wider public. Not everyone knows everything, and that's very common. The COG is trying to bring in some training from the state to help our local towns to come up to speed on it, because it is a lot to know. But for the most part, the Town of Irving staff was fairly knowledgeable. They, there are a few things that they could work on. And this is, again, is very common through all towns in terms of, you know, how, if someone came in and needed braille or a translator, sign language assistant, they didn't know quite what to do, what's the procedure and how to get those. And so things like a policy and a procedure, like a checklist for the town given to the staff might help clarify that for future events and, and training. And so also, the, another thing that is considered a program in the Town of Irving is your website. But you guys have just updated your website, and it's beautiful and fully accessible. So that is a check for you guys, that is, is fully accessible. But going forward, making sure that any staff that do edit that website should be aware of what shouldn't, shouldn't be on there. Making sure that any documents they post or attach, either Word or PDF, should be accessible format, things like that. And there's pretty easy guidelines, and I can distribute them to the town if you want a little checklist of what you should do in terms of font size and color. But the website, as is of right now, is fully accessible, which is great. And in addition, we also evaluated all of the town-owned buildings and facilities. And what we did was we went through and we've no, we basically made notes of everything. We measured doorway width, doorknobs, hallways, the bathroom stalls, the, the height of toilet paper roll holders. We went through and looked at everything, took pictures. And based on those results, we have rated all of the buildings, at least the publicly facing buildings, in terms of how accessible they are. And I don't think it's probably any surprise is most, you know, the new buildings like this and the library are fully accessible. Those that are not accessible are the older buildings, like the highway garage, the, the probably care historical building, the pump stations, things like that. And for those that are kind of fall in the middle, such as the police station, the elementary school, all the things that kind of prevent it being fully accessible are just really minor in terms of signage next to doorways may need to be added that are tactile, that people can touch with braille or doorknobs sometimes need to be changed from the turned doorknobs to lever style, minor things like that. The other buildings and facilities that might need more work are the, the town hall, the bathrooms. Those are hard to get into for people, especially with wheelchairs or mobility devices. That might require more investment to bring up to code. The bathrooms at Veterans Memorial Park are not accessible, and it's hard to get to the, the benches and the, the tennis courts, basketball courts. So those might require more investments. For the most part, most things that need to be brought up to code are fairly easy and not like huge capital expenses. And so what this plan does, and transition plan, is it creates a big punch list for the town. We've created for every building facility, there's a long list of things, or not long for every, not long for every site, but for some, it's a little bit longer than others. And it requires just every little minor issue in terms of whether grab rail in the bathroom needs to be installed, things like that. And we've prioritized it for you based on importance of accessibility. So for those that, it's really important for someone to either enter the building, access its primary function, or use the bathroom, those get higher priority. And we've also provided some timeframes of when this could happen in a short timeframe or maybe because it's installing an elevator in the historical building, that maybe can be pushed to a longer-term frame, and you probably start putting into capital funding if that's a priority for the town. But for the most part, it's a, it's a pretty fairly simple checklist for the town. You guys have done a really good job of keeping buildings up to date and code, and, and for those that are new, obviously, they're in pretty good shape. So I'm here to answer any questions you want. There's no requirement by the state to have this approved or officially adopted, but you most certainly can if you'd like to. But I'm here to answer any questions if you have.
By the way, we talked about, you know, a whole new building, putting stuff up. So keeping these in mind when we're doing our future projects to combine what we were already talking about with the checklist to make sure that we're ADA compliant is very beneficial, so.
And I should add, the state has implementation grants, and now that you have this part done, this is kind of the first planning stage. Now that this is completed, you're then eligible to apply for implementation grants from the state. So that's a source of funding that you can then go for to start checking some of these off your list using state funds. And also, one more thing to add, because you have this, it protects you from lawsuits or grievances. If you start making progress, it protects you further. So if someone, because what could happen if you don't have this in place? If someone were to see you and say you couldn't get into the senior center, and you were found to be at fault, you may be required to upgrade everything in town, which has happened in the past in other towns. So because you have shown that you have a plan and you're working on it and making progress, that protects you from having to do whole-scale upgrades. So it's pretty important to have.
Yeah. I would love to look at those numbers.
Notice that, that under deficiencies, there's, it's labeled as, as low, medium, and, and high. Is there any timeframe associated with those designations?
So the priorities are rated in the sense that if it's how important the issue is in terms of access to the building or to the function. And so if, if you can't enter a building or use the bathroom or access the primary function, like say you can't get to the town clerk's office or something like that, that's a higher priority. If it's just some minor issue, maybe like a sink in the staff kitchen, that doesn't really limit the function of the building. So that gets a lower priority. In terms of timeframes, if it's short, it's in zero to four years. If it's medium, it should be done in the next five to nine years. Long is 10 more. And then we also have an ongoing issue category, if you just constantly need to be maintaining something.
Thank you.
Sure.
Comfortable with us submitting this to the state this, this week. We'll get this filed and close this project out. And this, I believe, will be the training for the next staff meeting to go over each of these areas with each of the facility managers or the departments responsible for these programmatic or, or facility issues. And any of the items that we can do in the short term with the existing appropriations, we will get those rectified this year and let you know that status. And then for the items that, that do need capital improvements, we will forward those through the, the appropriate channels to the capital planning committee for consideration. So I think, I think there's a lot of easy to adjust items that we can probably rectify in the coming months.
Just for clarity, this year, meaning fiscal '23. Not in the next 24 days.
I was talking calendar.
Oh, we're calendar, sure.
Thank you for clarification.
Just, just. There's, there is a lot of hanging fruit, so to speak, but yeah, not in 24 days.
Not in three weeks.
Just, just for that. I, I just had one general question in terms of like the pump stations being listed. So, and you kind of commented on, you know, public facing and/or, and obviously from an employee standpoint, there may be a need or, you know, a potential future employee. Is that more why that's on that list? Because I think of it as more of a closed space that is very limited to public?
So technically, anything the town owns must be accessible because say, if your town administrator may be in a wheelchair, they may need to access the site for some reason. However, because sites like that or fire stations are usually only staffed by, you have to be an able-bodied person for, based on those job descriptions, the priority for bringing those up to code are usually pretty low and not as urgent. And so that doesn't necessarily need to be done in any due haste. That's one way to put it. Yeah.
They end up in the long low.
Yeah.
Because of that, okay.
Yes, yes. But technically, because they're town-owned, they need to be assessed.
Sure, sure. Okay. Any other questions tonight or concerns before we submit? And I think what we'd be approving or submitting is just that we've done the evaluation and have listed items that would be necessary towards a transition plan to be fully compliant.
Yeah, we, the three of you are okay with it. We'd present this plan as our final draft for the state's approval.
So I, I make a motion that we present the Americans for Disability Act self-evaluation and transition plan that was prepared by the Franklin Regional Council of Government to, to the state, if you will. For lack of a better.
I think it's Massachusetts Office on Disability.
Massachusetts Office on Disability. Thank you.
Just scrolled to the bottom of the thing to find the name. I will second that. All those in favor? Aye. And thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
And the CERCOG for all the effort on this. There's a lot there. It's really, there's a lot. We, we've talked only briefly about it, but there is a lot in there, and it's, it's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCrory.
Yes, sir.
Don't you come on up. We'll go into some of the highway or highway-related projects that we have on here tonight. Top-down, I guess we will start, unless I'm missing something, with the review of the Swamp Road Bridge and North Street retaining wall engineering proposal.
Because the one I have here is the bridge-street one.
It's up, yes. It is, hold on. Let's hear. So in your packets, there should be an engineering proposal from Weston and Sampson. And this is the engineering proposal that was submitted back in the fall, revised in the winter. We wanted to make sure that the retaining wall on North Street was included. And that was confirmed for us. And all the environmental permitting that goes along with working in the Swamp Road area. And so if the three of you were comfortable proceeding, we would use the existing appropriation from the state. They sent you money for the July 18th storm-related damage to fund this particular phase of the project. And that would still leave you with about $500,000 towards future July 18th storm damage-related repairs.
Because we got about $700? I thought it was more like.
It was a little over $800,000.
Okay.
And we had to use $125 towards the deficit from the damage.
That's right. Yeah, okay. So we've trued up the deficit now that we've gotten that funding, so that's clear?
That's clear.
Okay. And so from the balance, that'd bring us down to five. Got it?
Correct.
And generally, this is the same engineering proposals we reviewed the last time. That was adjusted to ensure it included North Street retaining wall and, and that area that had identified damage.
Correct. And it will include the public phase? I know there's a lot of questions about, is it going, are you replacing with the exact same structure? Is it a wider structure? Is it 35 feet to the banks?
Placement span, size, all of that, right?
All of those questions with the three of you, with Glenn, the community, so that you can have those conversations.
Yeah.
I think of this, and it's a little bigger probably in, in different ways, but similar to the Church Street Bridge process.
Very much like that.
We'll come up with some proposals. We'll have some meetings, get public input, make some adjustments, have some proposed options to then decide what to do with.
Yeah. And there was discussion about placement, of even getting better sightlines and moving the location of the current bridge, abandoning that location and part of that evaluation.
The turning radiuses on and off the bridge are not greatest.
Right. So if we could find a different location within that area.
Are we even, I don't need a formal answer, but are we even allowed to put back a one-lane bridge?
It's a really good question.
Yeah, I just don't know the answer to it, but it just sounds odd to me that we'd be able to in this day and age build.
Anything of this span has to be approved by Mastod, so we would have to make sure that that, at their standards. I haven't seen, guidance says you can't, but I would be surprised if they would allow us to put that back again.
Right.
I guess philosophically, I just think in some way it has to be different than what was there, and more than just an updated structure. I think there just has to be some adjustments.
And not that you're designing this for the forest, but knowing that that's a very popular route for individuals who are using the forest with their campers, they're towing trailers through there.
Which they should not be because of the following.
The bridge rating is, I was going to say the, the state forest bridge rating doesn't.
Because, I mean, it's not happening. But just to make you aware, these larger structures coming, larger vehicles coming through there, they're towing something behind there. And so in one direction, it works well, and if you're trying to head north, it would not be an easy turn. So there's, I think, a few reasons why you may want to look at both the local traffic and then maybe some impacts from the DCR. It's probably not the reason to make your decisions, but it's probably an impact you want to think about.
So any questions or concerns about the proposal? And/or interest in getting the engineers moving on this one?
I'd like to see it move along. I mean, it's, it's been a while.
It's going to take a while.
Yeah.
I assume Glenn, you have no concerns? Actually, Glenn, you have no concerns?
I have no concerns. The engineers.
I have no concerns as well.
All right, I'll... We'll take this one. I make a motion that we approve the agreement for engineering services by and between the Town of Irving and Weston and Sampson Engineers, Inc. on June 6, 2022 for engineering services related to Swamp Road Bridge replacement project, which includes the North Street retaining wall. In the amount of...
$204,000.
I think I'm getting, we're getting rusty.
$204,300.
And the amount is $204,300?
Yep.
From state funding for the July 18th storm.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Question, Brian. On the first page of the contract there, what is the second line for?
Yeah, I was trying to figure that out.
I stumbled on that because I was like, do I need to comment on what we're filling in there? This sixth day of June by Town of Irving acting here and through its.
Oh, if you were gonna put like an agent or something of the town.
Oh. And through its Glenn McCrory. Got it.
So actually, that is actually the question I do need you to answer. Who's authorized to sign this agreement? I can get it ready for one of you, or if you want Glenn or I to take care of it.
I'll make a motion that we authorize Brian Smith to sign side agreement between the Town of Irving and Weston Sampson for Swamp Road Engineering Services, Swamp Road Bridge Engineering Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're just happy that it wasn't you that was...
Reminds me of the day I was sitting on the other side of the table, one of the first times I went to a board meeting, and they were talking about GOG license fees. And they were going to, talking about $50 or $30 instead of our three at the time or whatever. And then they decided to keep it three or go to five, or I don't know, something very, very small. And I was like, I...
Something with five dollars.
You don't get to vote, though. I was like, oh, I'm still happy. Yeah. All right, that's one.
One down.
One down. Just making a note for myself here. So moving on to discussion regarding authorization to proceed with Church Street Bridge Engineering. Is it really engineering? We already did engineering. That throws me off.
Yeah, you haven't finished engineering.
It's like engineering, continue engineering.
Because you've done, you've stopped after the public phase and the conceptual phase. You've identified your preferred option, and now you have the authorization to go forward with construction from the voters?
Right.
So the question is, are you ready to say yes, that even though you said it was your preferred, are we ready to commit and say do bid documents that are founded on the preferred option? And that's what I put back in your packets. Can't think of the words today. It's the preferred option that we brought to town meeting and that we've put out to the public. You don't need to change your agreement with Weston Sampson because you agreed for all the services through construction administration, but we agreed to just do it in phases. So your standing agreement already covers this.
Well, I'll start us off with a motion to continue the Church Street Bridge Engineering for the balance of the scope of work with Weston and Sampson. Based upon the final design proposal that was approved by the voters at the annual town meeting.
Second.
You don't need anything else because all that was scoped in the original, right?
I just need to let them know that we're good to go.
Just to get a started discussion?
None.
Okay. Still a long way from knowing what or how we may get any assistance from, I guess it's state or federal funding for this bridge. But a lot of work with Brian and Mariah and the FERC, the Regional Transit Planning Committee Board?
Yes.
Ish, that then works with DOT and back and forth on the funding to regional projects that they had said there may be some available funding. So we've been investigating. Continue to, it's a very lengthy process. Getting this going will help Weston and Sampson provide the documents that we need to start filing to see where that goes. Doesn't look like it will change the scope or design. What we have should meet the criteria required for the state and federal approvals. So I'm gonna stay optimistic that that may help, if not, you know, some portion, if not all, of the bridge. So we'll keep pursuing that and as we have updates, we'll let you all know. No discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll let them know tomorrow.
Your work list is getting bigger fast.
And expensive.
This is true.
Yep.
I don't know if I should feel good or bad that these are already funding found or assigned. Discussion regarding, oh, one question on Church Street before we move on. That, what is the rating on that bridge now? Is it three ton, all vehicles?
Yes, it's all.
Is it actually axle-restricted or just weight limited? Okay. Next topic for you, sir. Discussion regarding Bridge Street Construction Project and the use of Chapter 90 and RAP funding. Winter something, something, something?
I don't want to recovery something program.
I almost asked Megan if there was an acronym for this ADA transition and everything else. There's gotta be an acronym.
If they're handing out money, we should be taking it.
I absolutely agree with you. So maybe real quick, I don't believe we talked about RAP funding yet, right? That doesn't ring a bell to either of you?
No.
Okay. So we got a notification from state slash DOT?
Yes.
That there is this winter recovery funding available?
Correct.
And divvied up across towns?
I think it was based off of just like Chapter 90 funds by the size of the town road miles and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And this was leftover winter money, basically, as we understand it in the state budget, that they were reallocating back to the towns? So, and it's winter road money, but it can be used for a variety of road projects. It's not winter-specific?
It cannot be used for engineering, and it can't be used for traffic details.
Traffic details.
But as long as it's road construction and repair work.
It's all work.
And we've already run conceptually this project, this idea, past our state coordinator, Glenn took care of that, and they indicated it would work.
And so just to refresh you, the Bridge Street project, we had a rough estimate from Weston Sampson on cost, and we were expecting to fund maybe 50%-ish from Chapter 90 funds and the balance out of raised and appropriated or free cash that was allocated during the annual town meeting.
Correct.
So this RAP is in addition to or to offset or in lieu of?
Correct.
Town funding?
Correct.
Town raised and appropriated or free cash funding, if we choose to allocate it there.
Correct.
Which I, I'm summarizing too, but that is your recommendation?
There's a request, yes.
What was the amount roughly?
For RAP?
Yeah.
Eighty-eight?
Fifty-eight.
This is $58,391, right? We're still waiting on our FY '23 Chapter 90 to be allocated. So I left that blank right now on the grid that's in your memo. As Glenn and I have discussed, it's usually in the high 80s is what you typically receive. So we expect something similar.
So, excuse me, so it's upland to use Chapter 94 for the project?
For part of the, for the project, yes. And town funds and this RAP money. And we're still gonna probably be a little short.
I was gonna say, my 500 was pre-contingency and escalators nowadays and engineering, right? That was without those pieces. So now we're at seven something, probably?
Right. And if we get the nine, roughly $90,000, we're still...
Hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty thousand short.
But as soon as the engineering begins and we get a little more, we have a fairly good idea of what's going on there, but until they actually do the borings, until they actually do the environmental permitting.
Right.
There's still some unknowns with that opinion of probable cost. So hopefully, this is just very conservative on the high side, saying, you know, we've allowed for a lot of contingencies, and maybe they can refine that number. But to the chairman's point, with the bidding environment that we have right now and escalators, it's anybody's guess. So we may need to identify an additional funding source on top of these.
I have a, just a question on the location. So I haven't been down there to look at that wall in quite some time. That wall doesn't actually wrap and run along Route 2A or...
For a short distance, it does. And that's where the state, they had a washout problem also for that July 18th.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's where they did the repair.
But that's not a stacked stone. That's just, it was just a riprap wall.
Okay.
That was on their part.
Okay.
But this does tie into Route 2 part of it. But we would only be going just to our layout.
Just our layout, okay.
So we will stop and the remainder would be DOT's?
Correct.
To manage from there, okay.
And the engineer felt confident about tying into the existing on that side of it?
Okay.
With the new structure.
Yeah, that was my question. How, you know...
What's that handoff look like if we're not repairing it all?
Yeah.
So the recommendation at this point is to get engineering going, kind of similar to the other projects, understand better probable cost.
Yep.
And then you also mentioned permitting, but we may or may not, how long do we have on that permitting if we get it?
Understood correctly, the Conservation Commission is likely the only entity that needs to permit, and we usually have a two-year window on the permits that we receive. We can, my understanding is we can seek an extension if we needed to.
But we will probably have an understanding, although they may happen somewhat concurrently, we probably have an understanding of probable cost before that's all complete anyway, right?
Yes.
And we can adjust if we feel we're out of range of what we can fund or are ready to do. Or maybe it'll come in lots less.
Maybe.
Add some optimism.
Yeah, I don't know where that came from, but...
So are you looking for a motion for the 88.5 with Weston and Sampson at this point?
Yeah, to engage Weston and Sampson for the engineering on Bridge Street for the 88.5 and to authorize somebody to execute the agreement.
And the RAP fund piece, that doesn't have a time limit on what it has to be used by, or it doesn't have to be used?
It does. So June 30 of 2023.
Twenty-three.
So we have a year and a month. And at this stage, all they need from us is just a written proposal, just needs to be submitted to them for how we would like to use the funds. So if you, the three of you are okay with us submitting this project as our intended use, we would submit this over to them and make sure that they give us the approval. They'll start the contracting phase, just like Chapter 90. The Chapter 90 piece, maybe we want to wait officially until we know more of like the probable cost opinion?
I think we have to, because they're pretty restricted on knowing that.
Right. But we'll come back to you for that request as well.
Well, and the RAP can't cover the 88.5 because engineering is excluded. So...
Correct. It's the town appropriation for them.
Which is fine.
Yep.
But if it's either identified much more expensive or we're unable to find the rest of the funding, can we reassign the RAP somewhere to a different project during the year? Like, you know, three months from now, we're at a point where this is unfortunately way higher or whatever that may be. Or we don't know that we can find the balance of the funding. We have the ability to submit a different RAP project to, okay. That'd be my only, my only concern on the RAP money.
Right. Glenn's got a plan A, B, C.
A, B, and C.
There's plenty of plans.
I was gonna say, we have enough contingency work.
He's got a plan to contingency for the contingency plan, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions or concerns?
Is there, I see the memo says wall and road reconstruction?
Yes, because of the excavating. So the road is gonna have to be changed. There's gonna have to be drainage put in.
It just, in their contract, they just talk about wall replacement, but in the title. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, they do talk about facilitating stormwater runoff, right? So that's roadway work, okay.
Yeah.
Is it expected that we would resurface or repair the entire road to the bridge?
Yes, right, right down to the bridge.
Okay.
Does it, real quick, for two sentences, help to just explain what this issue is about the wall? Does everybody remember why we're doing this?
Maybe for, I mean, I do, but maybe for the public, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt. We're just talking about it.
So there's a stacked stone retaining wall that protects the pump station in Farley, and I believe it's like a leaching field. So a couple of years ago, we noticed that there's the cap of the wall is starting to tip back in towards the road. So it's all washing out. All the material is washing out behind the stones, it's pushing the stones out. And eventually, it's just gonna fall in.
So it's undercutting road wall and it would eventually hit the pump station field?
So we put a straw wall, it's a wrapped bale part as like a makeshift berm, and it has helped tremendously with that to keep the water going down the road instead of into that washed-out wall.
Yep. All right, I make a motion that we engage Weston and Sampson for engineering services for the Bridge Street wall replacement and road repair in the amount of $88,500 and authorize Brian Smith, town administrator, to be the signatory on the contract.
And can I?
Yep.
Have you added the RAP to that too and plan to allocate RAP funds to said project?
You want that in there?
I don't know. Does Brian want it separate or together? It doesn't matter?
I don't think...
Or do you need a motion?
We're not signing the contract today, so as long as the three of you say we can put that in as our intention, we'll start that process. And once the contract comes back, we can bring it to you for signing.
Okay. Did we forget what I said?
Yes.
All right.
I will, I will second your motion.
Perfect. We'll leave it like that. Keep it...
As it was. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
That one going well. It's gonna be a busy Tuesday.
We still have a few more.
It is.
It's gonna be a busy summer and next year.
So your project list is, as always, I shouldn't, it's not a surprise. Am I missing any others that have your, that should have your name next to them?
I think those are the big ones. Any other, just if you don't mind me just making you all aware, we're working on vehicle procurements that were approved for FY '23. And just to be upfront with the three of you, the market, like everything else, is not great for purchasing vehicles. And so if the three of you be willing to consider those purchases in June, we may have a shot at getting something that may be in stock. Otherwise, we could be out over 12 months.
Yeah.
So we checked with the accountant and others to make sure that it's reasonable, considering the situation, to be signing those ahead of the fiscal year. Normally, we wouldn't because the funding's not yet available.
Right.
But the reality is, we may not get them in the year the funding was assigned. So, but you know, with limited cases, no concerns. So I said, let's begin the groundwork. If you're all amenable, we'll hopefully have them in our next meeting to review and approve so they can get them in queue.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
There's probably a variety of purchases and contracts that are going to be flowing through in the first couple, last couple, first couple of weeks. Trying to get in the queue as fast as we can.
We're up against every other town in the Commonwealth.
And everywhere else, probably too.
And the states.
And probably beyond the Golden Wall.
Nope, I think those are all.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Have a good evening. So we'll back from the top. Discussion regarding town response to COVID-19. We've seen some counts kind of up and down a little bit, more than we had before, but they seem to be hovering around the four, five range in the last few, three weeks, I want to say.
Double-check to see if I got today's, while we were getting ready for today's meeting. I did. Let's see.
Was that a firm? Yes or no?
I did.
Okay.
And we had no new counts this week.
Oh, great.
So you had four over a week ago, and then this past week, you did not have any counts.
I think it was five, and I want to say it was in the same range even the four weeks ago.
Right. Yeah, right.
Anything else on that front?
No.
Discussion regarding traffic control and Irving Center impacts. I have not heard anything significant. I have not heard anything significant lately.
Um, no, I haven't either, but, um, cars are flying. I mean, we could, we haven't seen any patrols down there in at least a month. And I understand that the.
Right.
What's going on with, with patrols and, and things of that nature, but it would help to have, have, uh, someone swing in there every once in a while until we get fully staffed.
Can talk to chief, yep, yep, see if I can spend a little time down there as allows. I mean, you'll see the summer traffic piling up in every direction down there, and it.
Sure.
It is what, it's not unexpected, it's just, yeah. Hopefully, before too long, we'll have a timeline on a bridge, and maybe it'll help some, it'll solve everything, but it'll help some. Uh, discussion regarding the annual town meeting warrant.
Have the memo in your packet?
Sorry.
There's one thing to correct with a future town meeting. There is an article for the, for the technical school funding?
Despite one of our election tellers' best efforts to correct us at the meeting on one of our 2024 funding.
And numerous proofreaders.
There was another one that no one saw.
So in Article 9, the appropriation for, uh, the technical school, even though it was very clear that we were funding for fiscal year '23, it's both in the title, it's in the, it's in the language of the actual article that we're funding for fiscal year '23, it does say beginning July 1st, 2023. So, uh, we should probably amend that to 2022 at the next opportunity. I have run this past, uh, town accountant, and obviously, the expressed intent is stated that this is for fiscal year '23. So the, the date is something, again, that we can put on a warrant to correct, but the, the intention communicated to the voters of what they were voting on was, was known. So she's not concerned with us proceeding, but as a housekeeping item, we should, we should just address that at the next, if you have a special, just to take care of that, so I just wanted to be upfront about that. All the other items are done, uh, they've been recorded. I know that the staff has been busy working with the town clerk to get vote certificates off to the attorney general's office, to, to file everything that needs to be filed, um, and any other authorizations that require vote certificates have been sent out to the respective parties. So, um, I think the town meeting work is all wrapped up.
Excellent. Anything else on the ATM? Okay. Um, moving on, discussion regarding the former IP mill request for proposal.
Just to give you all an update, um, I know you all discussed that the procurement was due right after annual town meeting, and you all authorized, uh, Select Ambassador Ash to work with Mariah on a public release. So at the close of the procurement, we, we did not receive any proposals. We did have one interested party who did send, um, a communication to explain that they would not be submitting a proposal. So, uh, the press release was finalized, uh, we issued that, I want to say it was the following Monday. It was posted publicly, and some public, uh, commentary has been received, and Mariah's been compiling it to, to have it ready for a future conversation when you're ready.
And that letter from one of the RFI respondents was primarily around the fact that the sentiment was not, uh, favorable to housing, and that was the direction that they were looking to go, and the, the community sentiment was not, um, favorable, based on them following kind of discussions with the town and zoning discussions at our meetings and such, so at this time, they would not.
Right.
But may in the future if.
Right.
The climate was more favorable.
So, I was gonna say, I know in the, in the press release, we talked about it would be on the warrant here, but in our subsequent meetings, we'd have more of an in-depth conversation about, you know, future, future plans of what we do. Uh, and we, we had discussed, um, you know, engagement with all stakeholders, you know, uh, that have anything, all the commissions, the boards, uh, that have, would have any tangential connection with the IP mill, the property, and, and residents, and just see how, you know, what we can garner for plans to go forward. And there was three basic categories, uh, we do nothing and we hold it, we, uh, auction it off, or we release another RFP and we try and, uh, get rid of the building through an RFP process.
And, and funding and raising, it was in one of those categories, I'm sure.
Yes.
Kind of.
Yeah.
As a, as a sub possible.
Uh-huh.
I think, uh, maybe in discussion, a little conversation about bringing those stakeholders planning, you know, other committees, commissions together with us and Com, et cetera, Capital, and possibly doing a site visit. It's been a while since we've been at that site. I think that may not be a bad idea to, to get back together and see, you know, the current state and, uh, you know, how, how much more potentially has it deteriorated? I know there was some areas of the building that were starting to collapse a little bit in the corner, or structurally, we're just not stable, as stable as they used to be, um, shouldn't say collapsing, but, uh, the corner of the building there was looking rough. I've won the building, so.
So Mariah, I can reach out to the, all the boards and commissions that you've listed and see if we can identify a site visit date?
Yep.
To, to bring those who are interested to come through the building, and then maybe we can set up a, a joint meeting later. It's been a few years since you've had one of those on the IP mill. And, uh, schedule a joint meeting with those boards and commissions, so that you all can have a, uh, hopefully, a fruitful conversation as to what ideas make sense for, for the next steps that we should be exploring.
It may make some.
So Brian, I, I was under, under the impression from, from the meetings we had in the past with the senior housing, that the Franklin Regional, um, Housing Authority was interested in, in some type of, um, housing slash, um, senior housing program in Irving, and, and they seemed to very closely follow all of our meetings, and in fact, were the only participants, uh, as, as far as the state's concerned in the community, um, Franklin County, that attended any of our meetings. Hoping that at some point, we'd be able to move forward with something. Have we reached out, are they, are they still interested, or are they sitting on the sideline?
Yes, uh, the, and as you know, the Housing Authority also has their partner agency, the Rural Development, Inc., which is how they do a lot of their programming and, and projects. They have been following, as you noted, your, your progress on senior housing specifically for years. They're very much interested in coming to town, obviously, I can't speak for them, but they've communicated that on more than one occasion. In fact, they came to the site walks for the former graded school, they came to the site walks for the former IP mill. They looked at both projects, and in both instances, they submitted letters saying, here's some ideas about the development, we are not interested in developing these properties. We are very much interested in senior housing, if and when you're ready to release that RFP for behind the senior and, and library facilities. So, um, I don't think you've lost their interest at all. Now, Mariah reached out to the Senior Housing Committee to see if we could schedule a site visit to the new facility opening in Sunderland. And I think that that would give you an opportunity to take a look at what's possible. So yeah, that's a, that's very much something that I believe they're very interested in.
I think the other two things, you were talking about kind of looking at scheduling a site walk and then a follow-up, you know, joint meeting with all the parties. I think, I'm just thinking tentatively, it's gonna be hard through the summer to probably find a good date, and maybe that's a weekend, maybe it's not, or I'm not sure, but we may want to look further out. You may want to look at July, even though we don't want to wait forever on this, you know, but, but just in terms of being able to schedule.
Okay.
May, maybe more difficult to do it close in.
Yeah.
Uh, and then I'm thinking for follow-up, we probably want to think about a different night, just for that topic, potentially to meet and discuss in the joint meeting, because it's just, it's a lengthy topic, and I don't think it should be added on to what we're already probably trying to do through the summer.
No, I, I, I thought we were gonna do a standalone meeting, and I was gonna suggest that when we're reaching out to all the boards and commissions, ask them to, uh, give feedback on both dates, one that we could do a walkthrough, and a second one where we could meet. Uh, it, it, maybe it's the same day, maybe we're taking out and carving out, we're doing a walkthrough and going right to a joint meeting afterwards.
That's a good point.
Or.
I think that's how you did it last time.
Yeah, you know.
And I think, you know, encouraging the public to attend, and we, you know, we may start with just those groups, kind of reflecting and discussing and brainstorming on what they saw, and what, you know, what, what criteria, what concerns are there, but then, you know, also getting any public engagement and feedback there beyond what may have already been sent in that we've, you know, accumulated by then too.
We've talked about when we do this, the site walk, to try to find a way to photograph as much of it as possible, uh, to be able to share with the public when we, we get back to the joint meeting, because we won't be able to take the public into the facility.
Right.
But to bring that, that information back, so that they can see what we're, what you're talking about.
Right.
Um, so we could put some floor layouts up on the, the projection screen and, um, have a couple of photos to help show the current status of the building.
Good idea. And I think, uh, you know, just for a few of the key pieces, right, what's the timing on the insurance? Because the insurance runs out, we can't reinsure it, so we are on the hook fully for the liability, and that's a, at least for me, a big concern. Financial side of that's potential.
Because I indicated that we were hopeful for a sale this summer, so.
Right.
I need to reach out to them, let them know the status.
Right, or if there's any extension opportunities, something to explore. I, I doubt it, but, um, the grant funding we already have for potential demo, if we want to do selective demo as an outcome of this.
Right.
Possibly more.
That grant funding was tied to, uh, commercial development?
Yes, but.
It's a night of yes, but.
If it was being used with a proposed project in tandem, then yes, economic development needed to be a factor of it. If you all decide that it's in, in the property in the town's best interest to clear the site, the amount that we have is not sufficient enough to do that. But to start that selective demolition process, um, we can proceed.
Okay.
And Mass Development has been maintaining a relationship with Mariah on this project. They've met recently, they'd like to engage you in, in finalizing the contracting piece, even though we have the award, you haven't contracted with them. And you could proceed with the selective demolition if you chose to. Their preference, again, is gonna be economic development, but if the property sat for a few years as a clear site, there's no, there's nothing in the, the rules of the program that says that that's not an acceptable use of the funds. So there's a little flexibility there. Their concern was if it was strictly housing.
Right.
That's where they weren't sure that that aligned with their programmatic goals.
Okay.
And there's other potential demo funding or site funding, site readiness funding that we're exploring too that may.
Right.
Depending on the path.
Right.
To help supplement, again, it's probably nowhere near the potential costs, but, uh, and then, what's the other one? Uh, oh, it'd be good to just get some feedback from Chief Holst and, uh, Chief Wonka on any, you know, site security issues and, or in and around that area that we may have been having over, you know, kind of over the last period, six to twelve, well, probably twelve months or so, just to get a sense of what, at least historically, are.
Right, the full picture of the impact of the building.
Right. If do nothing continues for any period of time, what does that mean?
Right, and we did have a rough estimate, uh, for complete demolition, and it was a, it was not a full-fledged, proposal or, you know, but it, it was a ballpark.
What were those numbers?
Yeah, just to keep that as part of the package, you know, because.
Italian bond study, I think.
Yeah, it was Italian bond, you know, uh, and, and the reason is, uh, after the press release, you know, it was posted on social media, and it was in the paper, and there were different avenues. You already started to get comments and, and, uh, say, you know, it'd be a great park, tear everything down. And I just want people to understand the cost, you know, and when we have those conversations about what that would look like for the town to, uh, take on a project of demolition of the entire site.
Or, or even selective, there were selective numbers in there too, based on different buildings, and, you know, what does that look like? And we've had those conversations about saving some buildings and.
The, the numbers were last updated in 2020, so they're about a year and a half old at this point, so we just need to keep in mind that, again, with the market.
At a 10% escalator, twenty.
But it gives you a starting point for the conversation.
Forty.
But yeah, exactly.
It gives you somewhere, it's not gonna go down from 2020 numbers, you know, it's only gonna go up, so.
Right, and understanding selective requires shoring, which is a whole nother number that we don't have, that's concerning.
Get rid of building one, well, then you've got, you know.
A big hole in building two, you gotta deal with.
Several, several hundred thousand dollars worth of shoring to do to keep building two from collapsing at that point.
Right.
Okay, I'll just do that one, those numbers, thank you.
Anything else in terms of just groundwork for continuing that discussion? At this point? It's a, it's a difficult one. Okay. Discussion regarding trash disposal agreement. Specifically, the disposal site.
So you gave me, uh, the authorization to engage what was Community Eco Power, now FNG, operated by Insight Recycling, uh, to get us through June 30th, because the solid waste district was looking into a proposed agreement with the McNamara Transport Station, operated by Republic. So the agreement that you have in your packets is the, uh, the outcome of those negotiations between the solid waste district and Republic. It does, for some communities, they were able to start back in April, we obviously did not take advantage of that, so it does have April 15th as a start date, it does suggest a three-year term, you don't have to do a three-year term. So right now, I'd be looking for us to do an agreement that would start on July 1st, if you were interested in going in this direction, and your hauling contract, you're in year two of your hauling contract, you're going into year three, and then you have the option to extend for years four and five if you choose to. So if that is something you want to consider as you're looking at a disposal, uh, site contract, these probably are the, the best rates of all the options that came to us. There is no fuel surcharge, it wasn't here. The one, uh, caveat that, of the challenge I'm having, and the caveat for something that may change, is the requirement for insurance. So they had put in a requirement that we were gonna add them as additionally insured on our blanket policy. And, um, that's unusual, typically, it's towns require the vendor to put us on their insurance as additionally insured. So we have the district and the insurance company and all of the towns who are asking this exact same question, meeting, um, to try to figure out, can we get that corrected, uh, it should be the other way around. If for some reason they are hardline to know, you must add us to your insurance, I did ask for those costs, and the cost of that would be?
Twenty-five hundred dollars a year.
That's with the, um, waiver.
Correct.
Yes.
Uh, maybe you better double check.
I'm gonna double check it right as we speak. Thank you, sir. Oh, there's a thing on the wrong screen, sorry. So, uh, yeah, twenty-five hundred total, so it's a five hundred dollars for a million umbrella, five hundred dollars for the million dollars in general liability, and then because they're asking for a waiver of subrogation, fifteen hundred dollars for that. And again, the insurance company is not recommending this, they think that we should push back and say, that's, that's not how this typically goes.
Which, which is happening, just to elaborate.
They are pushing back on that.
Jan is working with someone at the, well, I shouldn't say Jan is, but someone at my, uh, on behalf of some town that is part of all the towns that are interested in this agreement.
Right.
Uh, is working with slash negotiating to get that removed.
Correct.
Because it isn't common, right?
Correct.
So that's still up in the air.
Correct.
Do we know if they would be open to a, if you're done with your review, I'm sorry, overview, to a one-year with the one-year extensions, two-one-year extensions, just so it would align? I mean, obviously, they're open to a, a three-year.
Correct.
So, I would assume.
Whatever term.
Okay. And did we get feedback yet from Casella on whether or not there would be any change in terms of the hauling costs to a different site? We don't have that answer yet.
I did reach out to our customer representative at Casella Waste, just to get clarity as to whether or not they would have a concern changing the disposal site from Agwam to Springfield. Um, and they, they responded back that they were gonna look into it and have the team get back to us, and I did not get that response for today.
So beyond this cost, which may be the most advantageous currently that we have available to us, there's the insurance question and the potential hauling question.
Correct.
You need an answer before July 1st, or we need to do something before July 1st?
I need an answer by, I mean, we can keep it where it's going.
Right.
That's, that's up to you. This is the better pricing. This is the better pricing.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. What was that? I didn't catch that.
I was just saying that you could choose to keep it where it's going, which is USA Recycling in Agawam, but the pricing is going to escalate higher.
Right.
The pricing that we're locking in with this agreement is more advantageous to you And generally, other than this insurance issue, generally, the agreement is nothing that stands out as any other concerns to us.
Our original destination was what is now USA?
Correct. They became the new property owners.
Not that it answers what Casella's answer will be because it's changed, but I remember, I think we had looked at like distance and mileage and both were favorable to Republic's site versus the current site, but still don't know. Okay.
Would you like to carry that to your next meeting?
Any, I was going to say, any questions or anything else we need other than the open items?
I was going to say, without knowing the insurance piece, I don't feel comfortable signing anything until we know, after we push back on that.
Well, then, we need to understand if it changes anything with Casella because depending on what that may do, it may change what's favorable.
Right.
If there's a cost change there.
Okay.
Agreed.
Don't think there should be, but.
Right. So I'll keep working on those two issues. As soon as I have an update, I'll notify the three of you. Put it on your next agenda.
Yes, please. Next item of renewal of memorandum of understan, no, that's not it. Sorry. Wrong acronym. Yeah.
You're talking about.
M O A, yeah. Memorandum of Agreement. Yeah, thank you.
Yep, that's right.
For emergency medical services with the Town of Northfield for FY '23.
So this is the exact same contract, just amending it from 10 years to nine years to show that we had a 10-year. We already utilized one of those 10.
Right. And the agreement term has moved to this coming fiscal year, right? Or the period.
So nothing else changed? I know that Chief had mentioned at your last meeting that there may be some conversations happening between Northfield and Berniston that may inform a requested change for the agreement, but nothing came of that request. The Town of Northfield is fine signing this agreement. Proactively already sent a copy to send it over to you all for approval if you're ready to move forward. No interest in changing the fee. And as, not to speak for Chief Wonka, but at your last meeting, Chief Wonka went over the statistics for the service that you've had for the past year, and he recommended continuing the service for a one-year term, noting that we were going to participate in the regionalization study.
Right.
And then come back to the three of you with the findings of that study so that you could think about how you would like to proceed.
Any concerns?
Just to keep the conversation going, I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement for emergency medical services binding between the Town of Northfield with the Town of Irving effective July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. You don't need to mention of the, nope, options, so.
And we need a signatory approval?
Yeah, signatory.
For the chair, I think it calls out.
I think it's the chair. It does, yeah. And authorize Chairman Smith to be the signatory on the contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll send that back to them because their signed copy doesn't have the nine-year amendment, right?
Correct.
Okay. Review of meeting minutes from April 26, 2021?
Make a motion when you accept the meeting minutes of April 26, 2021.
A second.
Second. Any discussion?
No concerns.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
I was going to call it, but I didn't get that. I had a feeling.
Yeah.
No worries. Minutes from April 25, 2022?
Make a motion when you accept the meeting minutes of Monday, April 25, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting minutes of April 28, 2022?
Bill, you're on a roll.
Make a motion when you accept the meeting minutes, April 28, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of May 11, 2022?
Make a motion when you accept the meetings, meeting minutes of Wednesday, May 11, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
I abstain. Was there?
Next item in business is issuance of cemetery deeds, numbers 565 through 570.
Each of them have a different deed holder.
Mm-hmm.
Or secondary deed holder.
I should, I amend that. 565, 569, and 570, right? We don't have.
They're not sequential.
They're non-sequential, correct? I don't, we don't have 66, 67, 68, right?
Yep, they're here.
Okay. They are there?
Did they not end up in your pocket?
Um, I don't think so.
No, 66, I have, 67, I have.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yep, no, I was clicking on.
Oh.
The headings don't have them all.
They do not, you're right.
But the pages do, yep.
Yes, okay.
So it is 65 through 570.
Right, and they're, and they all have different, yeah, there's a primary deed owner and a secondary deed holder.
I'll make a motion, we issue deed number 567 for lot 1429 to Earl Lind, Lind, Earl Lindy, apologies, on the pronunciation, 45 High Street, is it Lindy?
Lind.
Lind, okay. Second owner, David Knox.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion, we issue deed 568.
Hold on, before you, just so we don't forget it, there was a 566 prior to that. I just don't want to skip over it and forget.
Did I do?
Yeah, we started with 567.
There's a 565. All right, let me go back, there's a 5.
Yeah, there's a 565.
Trying to find, then I scrolled too far.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we issue deed 565 for lot 1392. Deed owner one, Earl Lind, 45 High Street, second owner, Rebecca Williamson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion, we issue deed number 566, lot number 1393, to Earl Lind, 45 High Street, second owner, Ed Cooper.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I already did 567. Make a motion, we issue deed number 568, lot 1430, to Earl Lind, 45 High Street, second owner, Crystal Cummings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion, we issue deed number 569, lot 1386, to Earl Lind, 45 High Street, second owner, Amanda Hugerson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last but not least, make a motion, we issue deed number 570, 13, for lot 1387, to Earl Lind, 45 High Street, second owner, Andrew Hugerson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Related to the annual town meeting, amend order of public layout description of Poplar Mountain Road dated March 28, 2022. As you all may recall, we made an adjustment to the meets and bounds to add, I believe it was a missing sentence regarding those meets and bounds of Poplar Mountain Road during the annual town meeting when it was approved to adopt. And so we need to amend our order.
Correct.
Accordingly, to finalize.
I think I put suggested vote language in there if the top will. So the, hold on. Let me gather my thoughts before you. You can, I had a question, but I'm going to hold off.
So I'll give it a go. I'll make a motion that we amend our order of public layout describing Poplar Mountain Road dated March 28, 2022 as follows. I'm going to pause there. The vote certification notes the amendment that I made on the floor, I believe I made it.
Yep.
It doesn't note the section that I said to insert it in.
Correct.
In the vote certification, which is what's missing because there's no context of where to put that language.
It just says insert it.
I know where, I believe I know where it is, but that should get corrected.
The South section, correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Because.
I'll have him make that amendment.
At least when I'm reading it, maybe that was your question, when I'm reading this, where do you put that?
Well, yeah.
There's no context.
I read the vote certificate continued the amendment, it doesn't reference the South section, it doesn't reference after .9, .8A and as you had discussed. So I know it's not the clearest probably.
But the certification, is the language above in the certification the amended meets? I have to go and compare them to see if it's actually in there.
No.
It's not, right?
So it's actually, it was the north side, correct? It was not.
It was the south, I thought. Now I gotta go back and find it because now.
Then I'm confused because the north side doesn't have the ninth point. It goes from eight to 10.
It should be in there. I'll double check it with the clerk.
It is the south side. It is, let me see. It said in the south side, in the second paragraph, to insert after the sentence that was thence south, 26 degrees, 17 minutes, 19 seconds east, a distance of 101.33 feet to bound point 9A. Insert the following, thence south, 21 degrees, 30 minutes, 30 seconds east, a distance of 161.78. And you're saying it's in there, Brian, in the current, I'm reading from the ATM.
I'm not seeing it in that. He put it as you presented it, and then he's saying there's an amendment down below, and he's saying the amendment passed unanimously, Article 20 passed unanimously as amended.
Oh, and actually, it does say where, it just doesn't say that it's in the south side, sorry. So it does say, put these words in after those words.
Correct.
And those words should only exist in the south side.
Correct.
Because they should only exist once.
Correct.
So you can get there from here.
But it could be clearer. And if you'd like it clearer, I can make him correct that.
I defer to my peers, I would prefer, I mean, I don't know, just, yeah. You can find it, you can find it. I guess that's, as long as it's accurate.
As long as it's legally permissible, accurate, and can be recorded.
For me to not search for that without find and replace, I would prefer to know it was in the second paragraph on the south side.
I can, I can.
But that's just me, so I'm not saying we have to change it, it's up to.
I can ask the town clerk.
You too. Whichever way you would prefer it. In terms of the vote certification, I'll make the ready motion in a moment.
I'm fine with leaving it.
I'm fine with leaving it.
Okay. I'll go back and start my motion over. I'll make a motion that we amend the order of public layout of Poplar Mountain Road dated March 28, 2022 as follows. In the south section in the second paragraph, insert the words, thence south, 21 degrees, 30 minutes, 30 seconds east, a distance of 161.78 feet to bound point 10A, period. After the following sentence, thence south, 26 degrees, 17 minutes, 19 seconds east, comma a distance of 101.33 feet to bound point 9A, period. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. So we'll get that amended version signed, we'll get that, the vote certificate and the miles, all to the registry this week for recording.
All right. It might just be me. I'm, I even hate to even ask the question, on the north side, there is no point, point nine.
I'll go back through and look through everything with this.
I just want to double check, is, you know, I know.
What was that again?
So they have them all, they're all numbered, you know, south side, they're numbered, you know, 1A through.
Oh, 1, 2, 3, I see what you're saying.
And reviewing this for the 12th time, I think I just noticed that there was no point nine on the north side. It jumps from eight to 10.
Okay.
Which was never amended on the town floor, which poses a whole nother issue.
Unless by some miracle, bound point nine was removed at some point, and there is no bound nine.
Very well could be. I'll go back and do it.
That feels more like a miracle with the length of that. Okay. We'll confirm that with. Okay. I see why you wanted to wait.
I was hesitant to even bring it up, but it's a significant piece to make sure that it's.
Someone else will be searching to fix it some generations beyond us or tables beyond, you know, select words beyond us of what, what were we actually adopting? Or what meets and bounds are those really supposed to be?
I'll go through it again.
It does start at 0A on the south side. Oh, yeah, it does start on zero on the north, okay. Anyway, all right. We'll bet that one more time.
Yep.
Arch Street Sewer Financing Bond Authorization Votes. And just, and just as a lead up to this, we got our bond certification finally, after much ado about our risk of having a primary taxpayer of the type we do. And we ended up AAA, right?
Correct, stable.
I'm sorry?
Stable.
Yeah, double A is better than stable, but okay. We get a double A bond rating, which I believe is only third to double A plus and triple A. So not bad.
Very good.
As ratings go. Very decent, so no concerns there. So now they've continued on and we're about ready to finally execute that before July 1 here and get bonds issued and funds to actually complete this process in the fiscal year.
Correct. So the packets had all of the motions outlined for you, but they, the procurement information was missing because that occurred this morning, and he sent it over to us about an hour before your meeting. Would you like me to print off copies so you have one in front of each of you? I can grab it for you. I emailed it forward, but I'm sure you haven't had a chance to open up the new copy.
And to clarify, there was some discussion of whether or not we needed to take each of these seven or eight different votes verbatim? Or whether we could vote the printed? Did you get clarification from them on whether they had an opinion?
It is your.
Discretion?
It is your discretion. He told me that some boards are traditionalists and they go verbatim, word by word, and other boards have felt comfortable voting them through as a full presentation, as presented. If you choose to do that, either way, as long as we can issue the certification that is drafted in front of you, that's all that the lawyers need to finalize. What he did suggest was if you were to vote as a whole, that you would vote to have this recorded, that's presented in the meeting minutes. So it'd be part of the official record, which is one of the statements of fact, is that this is recorded and on file with the town clerk. Which is one of the, the statements of fact, is that this is recorded and on file with the town clerk. The only suggestion that I would make to you for an amendment to what's been posted, everything else I've read it through, it looks fine. You don't have a clerk of your select board.
I was gonna say.
So I was going to suggest that you just amend the clerk to be the chairman, and that the chair could sign on behalf of the board.
It's not worth holding up the process, but couldn't we necessarily strike the first paragraph? Because it doesn't apply, that would be what the town clerk will do when he certifies our vote. If we're gonna record this and he's gonna certify it, wouldn't that be his statement of certifying our votes below?
No, they're, they wrote this from the assumption that the select board has a clerk.
Got it.
So I think we just change it to be chair or somebody.
Mm-hmm.
If you want, you could, I mean, it could be anybody. As long as somebody's duly authorized to certify this, then you're gonna have.
That's fine. Do you want, back to Brian's first question, do you want a printed copy of this, or are you good with what we got in our email? And this substance is similar to what was sent in the packet, it's just.
This is verbatim, except.
Except it has the numbers.
It has the numbers that were missing, the blanks are filled in, right?
Correct. So these are your interest rates, these are what the amounts will be for payments every year. This is, this is your debt service schedule that we're looking at. Does allow you to pay it off after eight years if you feel like that's something that the town's in a position to do and you want to exercise that option. So you, if we do vote on it as just a full package, we have to make sure we amend in both areas. The very opening paragraph says, I, the clerk of the select board, and then the signatory at the end is the clerk of the select board. So as long as those two are amended, everything else could be voted in as presented. And if you wanted to commit to the, to the record in the meeting minutes. I reckon you go one by one.
Would any of you like to go one by one, or would either of you?
No, I'm looking at them all, all the different ones, and I don't I don't see the need. If you wanted to, at least for contextual purposes, in your motion, if you're gonna putting this forward, it is for the full 1.57 million that we were authorized by the voters. And the general obligations sewer bonds, they will be dated June 15th, 2022. And they're going to be to Robert W. Baird &amp; Co. Inc. I think that's. And they do put in that first one that the vote will be for the full price of one, 1,612,016.50 and accrued interest.
Well. I guess I'll make a motion that we amend the selectmen vote language for the bonds by changing clerk, clerk of the select board in the first paragraph to chair of the select board. And clerk of the select board under the signature line on the last page to chair of the select board. And where did that go? In the second to last paragraph, adding the town administrator, in addition to the select board, town clerk and town treasurer authorized to take any and all actions on such certificates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other concerns or questions on it? Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve and record the amended vote of the select board document related to the Arch Street Sewer Project for a sale of $1,570,000 of general obligation sewer bonds dated June 15th, 2022, at a price of $1,612,016.50 and accrued interest to Robert W. Baird &amp; Co. And all other language in said document as amended.
Second.
Did I get the certify in the minutes, I did, right? Or, or to place in the minutes, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Look at that ready for your signature.
Next item is approval of the FY21 professional service contract with the Franklin Regional Housing and Redevelopment Authority for the Community Development Block Grant Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Beautiful.
Tried not to use the acronyms to shorten that.
So we. So you have a memorandum preceding that document that just lets you know that DHCD has reviewed everything. They're giving the okay for you to engage the housing authority to administer this program on your behalf. And as soon as they get that back, we're, we're good to launch this housing rehabilitation program.
And this is generally the same that we already had a proposal and discussion with the housing authority on?
Correct. The dollar amount for the contract is the same as what was in the grant proposal that you approved when we submitted it. And are, are we retroactively going back to April 15th? Correct, because that's technically when the award process started. Okay. You just got this all back from. Right. State two weeks ago. Yeah. Is there an end date on this? Try and.
If I recall, don't these run until the exhaust funds or until?
Typically, that's what.
I think that's, yeah, I feel like they're normally open-ended or up to 10 years or something, I can't remember.
I don't see an end date.
I didn't see one, that's why I was wondering if I missed it.
Didn't see one either.
It is through. Looks like it's supposed to be June of 2023. If you go all the way to the sec, the attachment B of the proposal, and it gives you the fees and payment schedule. Yep. And you go down to general administration and program delivery, all the quarters are laid out. And they lay it out through June 30 of 2023. Well, it just says June, but. Right. We have to assume it's June 30th? Yeah, it is.
Well, the final progress report is quarter ending June 30, 2023, so that's seems to be.
Yep.
Oh, six, 6.1 says all services here and or shall be completed by June 30, 2023.
Okay.
Unless DHD exercises a grant extension, yeah, it took, it's buried. Six is on or about April 1 through 6.1 is
Okay.
June 30, 2023. And the 248, 267 is the fee.
Yep.
Which is section seven, right?
Correct. I believe this one gets signed by the chair.
And, uh. Yeah.
I believe you've been the signatory in all of.
Yeah, I believe we authorized you and they.
They denied it.
They, they.
Goes back to the chair.
They didn't like it and had never had it happen before, so they didn't know if it was okay, so we just relented them, yeah. So we need me, we need you, and we need Deb.
Correct, I'll sign off on procurement, Debbie will.
She'll sign off on, right, but we don't need to move that, just to, yeah, okay. Okay?
You ready for a motion?
Yes, please.
And you need the 248, 267 in there? That's the fee that they're entitled to. Correct. Okay, uh, so I'll make a motion to approve the agreement binding between Town of Irving and the Franklin County Regional Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Contract effective date of April 15th, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, with a fee amount payable of $248,267. Uh, thank you. Well, with the Chairman Smith authorized as the signatory on the contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
These are lengthy ones tonight, and lots of them.
I told you I felt bad putting this agenda together. It's only 8:30.
I wasn't gonna say, I looked and I wasn't gonna say it, because I was thinking it, but I said earlier, it's a long agenda, but it probably won't be too bad time-wise. 15th and 16th water commitments for FY22.
Make a motion to approve the 15th water commitment FY22 in the amount of $51.18.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And make a motion, we approve the 16th water commitment for FY22 in the amount of $638.59.
Second. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor? Aye. And I believe, unless I skipped over something, which hopefully someone will catch, last item for regular business tonight is review of the freemium trash sticker program.
I chuckle every time I see freemium.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Hopefully, the memorandum provided enough just overview information of how the programs work this year. We, I think when you all thought the program through last year and were trying to anticipate what the potential demand or need for, for allowing households to have a certain amount of tonnage, was estimated, it was a bit abstract, so hopefully the information gives you some confirmation that you weren't too far off from what the demand was for the year. So most households have taken their initial 104 stickers. Some households have come to ask for the additional 52 that you had allotted to them. We have a few households still coming in to get those. Very few people have purchased any stickers at all. They've been able to work within the amount that you gave them. So Betsy has been tracking this throughout the year, so you have it broken out by property owners and renters. So she's got a pretty accurate database for that. In terms of your trash tonnage, you can see we did a year-by-year comparison, so on page two, the blue bars are last year's numbers compared to this, the same month this year in orange, and consistently across the board, you've seen a reduction in trash tonnage. So while we can't fully confirm exactly where that additional tonnage was coming from last year that we were concerned about, the intended goal of, of seeing some curbing of that or some plateauing of that trash tonnage has occurred. And in some ways, a very significant reduction. So from that goal, I think we made some progress. The next chart shows you our recycling history for the two years. And I presented it as a stackable bar chart because you've got the containers one week and the mixed paper the next week. So your recycling activity for the year has increased. It's not substantially higher than it was the year before, but there has been some increase in your recycling, so we probably have some more progress that we could make in that, in that area.
September was, there was issues with the.
We didn't get accurate.
delivery numbers, whatever, and some of it we didn't get charged for, and who knows what.
Yeah, we had an issue with the holler and the disposal site. So that has been frustrating because we, we lost a month of data. But all the months preceding it and the months after it have demonstrated a similar reduction in trash, slight increase in the recycling. That has been consistent throughout the months.
I mean, I'm seeing 20 to 50% every single month.
Correct.
I don't think there was any that was less. It's a lot. At what new rates, we were talking of 100 ton?
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we're talking, what, 10 to 20, plus 25 ton reductions per month?
And we're back to the number of trucks we started with.
Yeah.
So we had extra, if you remember last year, we had extra trucks running the route because they couldn't fit all of the material in the trucks that we had procured by the contract. And so my, my concern, not knowing what the disposal rates would look like this year, my concern at the moment was that if, if they're running extra trucks with extra staff, our collection contract was not sufficient to keep up with that. So we've been able to get everything back down to what you procured.
And the sticker data is for effectively about 10 months.
Correct.
Because we issued them about a month after the fiscal year started.
Right, correct.
And we're about a month away.
Correct. So yeah, you all kind of guessed about what we needed.
Do you offhand happen to know how many households purchased? I mean, out of the few hundred, you know, what is it, under 300 total stickers so far that have been purchased, just curious.
And they're on sheets of four.
Five houses, is it?
It's less than.
10 houses, 20 houses, yeah, right, okay.
But I can get you that number instead of three.
Just curious, yeah.
You can probably add, I was gonna say you could probably add one household, because I'm sure over the.
Not gonna quite make it?
Well, if, so I, I had made a comment, if it's gonna go through August 1, I won't make it. July 1, I will, but it, it's, uh, the number we chose is very close. Next year, I probably won't, if I have to do a full 12 months. So that's the question I'm posing to the three of you, if you're okay with the way it's run, we're ready, the stickers are here, we're ready to put them in envelopes and get them ready for the residents. Last year, because, because it was a big transition and we had to do all the education and the community meetings, we mailed them home to every resident, and there was, it was too much to mail the full stack, so they had to come get that extra 52 if they wanted it. If you're okay with it, we could give everybody, if they want their 156 right up front, we can give them to them on July 1. They're there, they're available, and then nobody has to, to do any of that. We would just propose that people come to get them, only because we had a few households claim they never received them in the mail. That was disappointing to put all that out into the mail and have some households claim that they never received them and, and very well may have disappeared in the mail.
Yep.
There was no way to be accountable for that, so. And most people have been fine coming in to pick them up. Takes a few seconds.
So a couple things. One, are we good with it? Two, are we good with the counts that we offered? Are we, are we offering the whole 156 up front, which, yeah, versus splitting it up, which partly was a mailing and, and a first year thing? Three, are we good setting it up to be a pickup only, not a mailed option? July, well, if they're ready, we would probably offer, potentially offer pickup before July 1.
Effective tomorrow. Get them ready for next week. I mean, yeah, they're, they're, they're ready, but you need like a day or two to just sort them all out and get them ready. But yeah, they could be ready whenever residents want them. You haven't changed anything on the tickets, correct? Nope, what we did was you just picked up the sequential numbering from the last one, not that we're. The only reason I ask is if people can't get there soon enough, they have.
The existing, yeah, they're not invalid, they don't expire, right?
So anybody who's watching this, listening to this, if you have stickers, we haven't changed anything, so keep using those same stickers.
So if they want to wait until, if they have enough to get them through August or September, they could wait to pick up their new packet in August, you know, at their convenience.
Absolutely.
So no rush to get the new ones that go into effect on the new fiscal year.
But if you're running low, like you described, your allotment's ready for you at town hall.
Okay.
And there, effectively, isn't anything saying you can't use them in June? They're not expired, they're not, they're not good until, no, it's just a matter of timing and generally it's for a year, right?
Absolutely. Yeah.
So I guess, one, are we good with the count, 156 a household? For free?
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, I mean, as a household that's probably gonna run short on that, I'm still good with 156.
I don't even remember what the-
Three a week, it makes sense, you know?
Yeah, I don't even remember what the cost of the additionals were, it was minimal.
I think it was 50 cents. And again, we've sold so few of them.
Right.
We've sold less than 300, yeah.
Okay. Pickup? No delivery? And if so, my thought or my comment was gonna be, do we make a weekend morning available? Kind of like we've done around other items during anything goes, one weekend where people could go just because they work or whatever, you know, availability.
Steph and I probably already discussed being happy to do that, stay late an evening or two, come on a weekend, whatever made sense to help people pick those up if they can't make it during normal hours, absolutely.
My only concern is just for people that have, you know, mobility issues or ability to get to town hall to do it, I don't want them to feel like they're not able to dispose of-
We can still mail them. I think there was just a concern that some people didn't get them and they didn't know why they didn't get them and they didn't know where they went. We found some things got, people moved, but they're the, this happened with renters. They're the new tenant, but the mail got forwarded to wherever the tenants went, so the new tenant-
Someone got a stack.
The new people go, I didn't get my trash stickers, but we didn't know they were in town because renters don't have to register with us. But they went to Montana or wherever the resident moved to, right? And we're not gonna get those back, yeah. So some failed effort.
That's a really good point.
The only incident?
We had a couple other residents who do live in town who claimed they never received it. And it's not that things don't get lost in the mail. It could happen.
Mail's, mail's not been what it used to be in the last couple of years. They've had a lot of, a lot of burden and challenge.
So, but Betsy, Betsy and I worked with every resident to make sure that they got what they needed and if they were a renter in town. It was helpful because all we had is the voter list to work off of, not everybody is a registered voter. So, so we really got a chance to meet people who live in town and came in to just quickly get their stuff and find out where they live. So Bets has been keeping a pretty accurate database of those folks and as people change, people have been pretty good about letting us know. So we think we've got a better handle on that dataset now. But it just raised the question, if you want us to mail them out, we just want to make sure you're aware that we had some who claim it never made it to them.
We can make arrangements though, too, what's that?
I was gonna say, what was, what was the final cost for mailing them?
Just mailing 104 per, I wanna say it was somewhere around $1,200 for me to mail those out.
I mean, I have no problem saying that, you know, it's a pickup at town hall. And clearly, if anybody calls and says, "I have a difficulty getting there," we accommodate.
I was gonna say, if you have a challenge with that, please call, we'll make accommodation, we'll work with you to accommodate what you need, yeah. I think that makes total sense.
Okay, a lot of residents have just stopped in when they're doing some other type of business and said, "Why here, can I pick those up?"
And given the flexibility of, you know, the fact that many people still have some, there's no rush. And so people can get there at their convenience over the next three, six, 12 weeks even, you know, whenever they have a free moment. And if they really can't get to the town hall, just call and we'll accommodate as needed.
Does it make sense to try to do like an evening later in June, an evening in July, and a Saturday, maybe morning for like two to four hours? Or do you want to just put it out there, regular town hall hours? If you would like to make arrangements off hours or, you know, other accommodations, just call.
I think that makes sense.
By appointment, basically, right?
Because it's such a long span of when people come, I don't think we have to set aside special times. They can reach out if they can't make the town, regular business hours.
Yeah, okay. Then we can accommodate them, whatever way we need.
Of all the residents.
So 156, pickup, call for arrangements, we'll let everyone know they're available starting next week?
Perfect, that gives us a couple days to get them all ready, absolutely.
And are you planning to bundle them in like 52s or something? I mean, I don't know if, there's going to be people who probably don't need another 156.
We do have residents who don't want their full 156.
Somebody who only is using one bag a week, doesn't need-
Right, so we were gonna do exactly what you described, put them in bundles of 52. So they were ready to go, and if somebody came in and said, "I want all three," we'll give you all three. And if they come in and say, "I just want 52," we'll give them that.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Did we miss anything? Is that all you needed?
As long as you're okay with the progress we've made this year. I know it was an easy decision.
I'm glad you brought that up, I think the charts were great. The only thing that I would be nice to see maybe in August, or July, I should say, is a comparison of the law, of fiscal '22 versus pre-Cassella. Because we had done a lot of that analysis as the numbers kept going up, week by week, you know, it used to be five or six tons. Now it's eight or nine, or whatever it was.
Right, right.
So this is good, I mean, we see the reduction, but I wouldn't mind seeing just kind of that weekly breakdown. How does it compare to, you know, rewind two or three years when we were trying to compare to before and just see where-
Okay.
What has that done?
Just the larger, the larger scope.
Yeah, yeah, a little more minutia, but probably gives you a different look at the trend.
And every three to four months, we've been trying to put out an update to the residents, just so if they, if they have been interested in what the progress has been made on this program. So with this recent update, I can get out another round of updates to the residents.
Excellent. With that, our next planned meeting on a two week schedule would be the 20th. I think we've covered everything that was time sensitive, so that's probably good, but if something comes up where we need to meet, we'll let you all know.
Okay.
Sooner than that. We're gonna plan to do reappointments.
Yes.
At that meeting. Any other items, business or concerns before we go into executive session? Okay, I will move that we go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in excuse me, in participation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Chief of Police and Fire Chief. And immediately following, move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. We will not return to regular session. Could I get a second?
Second.
So roll call vote. William Bembry?
Aye, William Bembry.
Scott Bassrash?
Aye.
Jacob Smith?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.